Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education, and on behalf of my fellow members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is February 25, 2015, and we are holding this month's meeting here at the boardroom at 42 West Madison. We will follow our normal order of events today. I would point out that a couple of our board members had prior commitments and could not be here today. Both Ms. Quozzo and Ms. Hines could not be with us today. And I'd also like to advise you that Dr. Bird Bennett has a prior commitment and will have to leave early before we probably complete the meeting, so please be aware of that. And with that, Madam Secretary, will you lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, February 25, 2015, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Beenan.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Here.
Board members up.
Here.
Dr. Ascoitia.
Present.
President Vitale.
Here.
Five members present. There is a quorum. I would also like to recognize Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, our CEO, Mr. James Beverly, our General Counsel, Angel Diaz, the honorary student board member, and our shadow student this month, LaShay Murdock. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and I'd like to start by asking our honorary student board member, Angel Diaz, to introduce this month's shadow student.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today we are joined by LaShay Murdock, a junior from Corliss High School. LaShay would be sharing a few important things about her CPS school experience with you today.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. Thank you, President Vitale, board members, and the honorary student board member for this opportunity. My name is LaShay Murdock. Presently, I am a junior at Corliss Early College STEM High School and attended John Whistler Elementary School. I'm currently serving as the LSC Student Representative, and I am very active in many activities such as after-school matters and a variety of sports such as volleyball, basketball, track, and bowling. I'm currently taking classes at Olive Harvey College following the web development pathway and has earned six college credits. I enrolled in the STEM program and will be graduating in June, and be graduating in June of 2016. The STEM programs offers Corliss students the opportunity to expand our education through technology and open doors to many STEM-related careers. It also helps students to understand the world today and how we can impact the world through technology. In the future, I am planning to attend Jackson State University in Jackson, Mississippi, or Xavier University in Louisiana. I am planning to major in engineering and minor in architect and becoming a landscape architect. I'm honored to be selected as the shadow student of 2014, 2015. I know that I have the ability to change and make positive, to make positive changes and improve my school. Thank you for this opportunity.
On behalf of all the board members, LaShay, we welcome you and thank you for coming. And she didn't emphasize this, but LaShay has also high ambitions for her volleyball career, and so we're going to wish you good luck in that as well.
Thanks.
So, we have a special situation today with respect to honoring excellence, and Barbara, will you please introduce our guest?
Yes. Thank you, President Vitale, and members of the Board of Education, members of the community. Please join me this morning in welcoming representatives from the Noble Network of charter schools, which is celebrating its 15th anniversary. The Noble Network held some of their first classes in the lunchroom and in the lobby of the original school building on Noble Street. Since then, they've expanded to 16 high school campuses, and more than 10,000 students are served. Noble is not only the largest charter network in the city, they are among the very best public schools found anywhere in Chicago. Noble's mission is our mission: to provide students with the opportunity for a high-quality education that not only prepares our students to enter college, but gives them the academic and social foundation necessary to earn that college degree and to pursue their dreams. I applaud Noble for all that it is doing for Chicago's next generation. I would like now to introduce Mr. Mike Milkie and Mrs. Tanya Milkie, who founded Noble on the premise that strong leadership, a rich academic foundation and environment, and a culture of high expectations for every student had the power to transform lives. Mike and Tanya, we thank you for your commitment to our students and for your commitment to the city of Chicago, and at this time, I invite you to come and speak.
Thank you very much, Barbara, and board staff at CPS. So, first of all, we want to take this chance while we are able to speak to the whole board to say thank you to you. We know that your work is difficult and that you take a lot of heat and you stay strong, and we really appreciate that. It's not easy work, and we really know that you're working so hard to make the best decisions you can for children in Chicago. Staff at CPS, the leadership there have been so supportive. You know, we know it's been 15 years because it was during the '90s that we both taught at CPS district high schools and loved it there, but then we're given an opportunity to impact more students. We know it was 15 years ago because we awarded our charter on Pershing Road, and now we are two places removed from that, and these are beautiful facilities, and glad that you're in this more cozy home. And what we've been able to do, I think, is use some of the autonomy and support that we've been given to create schools where students feel supported and valued, and that's why they're able to stay. And, you know, we have a low dropout rate and a low mobility rate, high graduation rate, very high rate of students going to college, and we follow them all the way through. We now have 10,000 students, as Barbara said, 5,000 alumni. We're so proud to be able to have impacted 15,000 students already, and we have with us eight of those 5,000 alumni, and all of them work at the Noble Network. One is a principal at the Noble Network, leading, you know, 600 students, and others are teachers and other staff at the network. Five of them were there on that very first day in 1999 when we opened. And so, that's the reason we do the work that we do. That's the reason we're so grateful to the board and CPS and appreciate the congratulations, and we hope for 15 more great years. So, thank you so much.
Mike, well said. Just, we're so appreciative and thank you for the opportunity, and we spend every day trying to make you proud and our parents proud as well for what they entrust us with. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, Mike, congratulations. You know, it's been an extraordinary ride for you, I know, over the last 15 years, and the impact you've had on our students' lives has really been significant. And, you know, frequently, we get parents and students from your schools come back and say thank you for you, and we really do appreciate it. I've had the opportunity to work with you for most of those 15 years, and it's been a pleasure to work with you and help you succeed. So, we really do appreciate all the hard work. Your work is as hard as ours, maybe harder, actually, every day out there, and it's been a real pleasure for us to watch your success and to actually get out to, as you know, I've been out to some of your schools and met with principals and students, and it really is a remarkable story, and we're very, very proud of you and happy to have you a part of our world.
Mike, personal congratulations. I remember being, and I'm sure we looked exactly like we look today, being colleagues on the Erie Neighborhood House Board together, and that was one of my first nonprofit boards, and hearing about this young teacher from Wells High School who wanted to create his own school, and I thought, "That is just crazy." And, but it's an honor that I got to talk to you a few times. I distinctly remember that because I thought, "That is, talk about a big dream." And thanks for showing that big dreams can come true, but more importantly, you've allowed a lot of other big dreams to come true for the passion you have for your students in Chicago and, you know, how much more you wanted to do for them that you've now accomplished. So, Godspeed to you for the next 15 and beyond.
If I may, when I went back as a neighborhood school principal, it was based on some of the same goals that you had in terms of preparing students for post-secondary success and not giving up on any of them and making sure they all graduated. And I congratulate you on those results, just like we continue to do. And I also remember, I think I went to your first graduation in your first building.
And you were one of our first Town Hall speakers.
Yes.
It's really amazing that many of you are still with us in so many ways, so, yeah, I remember it well.
It's perseverance.
That's right. Survival, but we're here.
Thank you.
That's great.
So, thank you, and we look forward to celebrating again, and, you know, we should say not only thank you to you, but all the people that work with you, your staff, your principals, your teachers, and of course, your students, particularly those who've come back to work with you again. So, thank you to all of you. Thank you for joining us today. We really do appreciate all of your efforts and celebrate your success. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
We'll now proceed with the business portion of our meeting, and we'll start with the CEO's report. Barbara?
Thank you, President Vitale and members of the board. I begin this morning by giving you a brief update on the development of the FY16 budget. My team and I are working diligently to develop a budget for FY16 that protects the investments that we've made in the classrooms and the remarkable gains that our students, teachers, and principals are making. Given our financial condition, this is proving to be a very challenging task. Over the last four years, we've cut more than $740 million in administrative and operational costs to our budget, and we continue to look for more ways to reduce our budget this year. We've also been transparent about using one-time, a one-time maneuver to avoid significant classroom cuts. Last year, we changed our revenue recognition period to tap into the hundreds of millions of dollars of one-time dollars in order to avoid cuts that would reverse the academic gains our children and teachers have made over the last several years. We have exhausted all short-term solutions to our budget crisis, and given the budget gap we face for FY16, which is now more than $1.1 billion, it is impossible for us to cut our way to a balanced budget. While we continue to do everything we can to find new revenue and to cut operational expenses out of our budget, the only real and long-term solution to our budget challenge rests in Springfield. Illinois ranks second to last of all of the 50 states in funding for public education, and Chicago Public Schools is the only district in the state that pays its entire pension cost. We must have meaningful reform in Springfield that includes an increase in the education foundation funding in addition to pension reform. I am deeply concerned that without meaningful legislative action in Springfield, we are in jeopardy of being forced to make deep and significant cuts that would have dramatic, negative, and lasting impact on each classroom in each school and will derail the academic progress that we have made so far across our district. My team and I will continue to do everything we can to advocate for the reform in Springfield as well as consider all of our options with respect to additional operational cuts that are necessary to address the challenges for the upcoming fiscal year. At this time, I will take a pause to answer any questions that you may have for me or members of my team.
Questions here. Barbara?
Today, the board will consider requests to renew agreements with our vendors who help us to deliver the supports we need to keep some of our most-at-risk students engaged in the classroom and on the path to success in college, career, and life. Strong social-emotional supports are aligned with Pillar Two of the district's five-year action plan, and they are a central part of our work to what we do and strive to achieve, which is not only to provide academic foundation for our youngsters, but also to help educate the whole child. These are programs that teach our students how to rebuild relationships with their peers as well as with the adults in their lives. They teach our students how to solve problems without conflict and how to navigate a world that is much larger than they. These exemplary partners help us to, one, integrate social-emotional learning, or SEL practices, into our core instruction; two, to provide critical mental health services that can remove the barriers that sometimes exist to learning; three, to help the adults at our school adopt and embrace a restorative justice approach; to discipline that keeps students with behavioral challenges connected to their school communities; and finally, to assist with interventions for students who are struggling with substance abuse or gang associations, these activities that may lead to expulsion in the past. CPS supports SEL in a multitude of ways: by building awareness around SEL and reinforcing its principles in our professional development meetings with senior leadership, at our conferences, and in all communications with our partners in the field; by encouraging cross-departmental collaboration to ensure that SEL is woven into the curriculum and instruction; our family and community engagement, and through our implementation of Common Core state standards, we have integrated SEL practices; by advocating for a new district discipline policy that focuses on universal SEL, universal supports for all of our students, and identifying and delivering targeted supports to our students that are most in need; and finally, by making the necessary investments to carry out our mission. Last school year, we developed school climate standards. These standards are now in our school and establish a common understanding of what a safe and supportive learning environment should be and how academic development may be enhanced by social-emotional supports. This school year, we launched an extensive and intensive ongoing professional development leadership teams in 72 of our schools. These leadership teams were given the support to help them establish the kind of safe and supportive environments as defined by our new climate standards. This support will be expanded to additional schools. Also this year, we launched an SEL Leadership Collaborative for 15 high school principals, giving them the opportunity to learn from one another and share best practices with colleagues. We cannot reach children who are not in school, so we plan to build on this foundation, as we've done in the previous years, by expanding alternative programs for out-of-school suspensions and expulsions. And further, we will expand by delivering additional supports and training to more school staff and bringing a greater awareness for the need for social-emotional supports and a more restorative approach to student discipline. We have come so far in the last three years in how we identify students in need and how we deliver the necessary supports to keep our students on track, but we all know there is much more work to be done, and with the proper social-emotional supports in place, I believe that there are no limits to the possibilities that our students can achieve. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Barbara. Any questions for Barbara on this issue?
I just have one. Assessing the quality of social and emotional learning and as well as our community partners, do we connect this data to the results that we've been receiving in terms of graduation rates, retention, freshman on track, persistence? Is that something that plays a role as we continue to renew our partnerships with them?
Yes, it is. It is, Board Member Ascoitia, it is clearly the kind of metrics and the kind of data that we share with our community partners, which helps us to build the next iteration of the work moving forward. Our partners are fully engaged and actually participate in the negotiations of how we will proceed with each of the schools as we expand.
Great. So, it's not just a matter of schools selecting these, but giving them the information in terms of their success rate?
Correct.
Thank you. I'm a big proponent of academic, social, and emotional development, and I'm glad we're putting our resources into this. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? If not, thank you very much, Barbara. And now we'll turn to announcements. Once again, I will remind everybody that if you're interested, the board does offer office hours. If you have an interest in coming to meet with a board member, please call the board office at 773-553-1600. We're pleased to offer this and actually pleased that many of you have taken advantage of this, and we look forward to seeing more of you in the future. Madam Secretary, would you please share the details for the next board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on March 25, 2015, at the CPS Loop Office. Advanced registration will open at 8:00 a.m. Monday, March 16, 2015, and will close Friday, March 20, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I would just say again, because it's been brought up in the past, that we have both been encouraged and are willing and interested in having board meetings out in our communities, out in the schools, and we are working on plans to have at least a couple of our meetings out in the neighborhoods during the coming year. So, you'll hear more about that as we settle on both times and locations. So, with that, let's now proceed with today's public participation secretary session. Madam Secretary, would you please proceed by calling the first speaker?
Mr. President, before we begin public participation, I would just like to address the audience. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for the public participation segment. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium, and we will have a staff member assisting you in putting you in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on the top of the podium for the speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. And then, please immediately take your seat to allow for the next speaker. Also, for those individuals who plan to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, it would kindly, if you could kindly make a single file line and stand as near to the railing as possible, this will allow people to pass through in that area safely. Thank you, Mr. President. So, proceed by calling the first speaker. It will be Helen Ramirez Odell, Speaker Number One, followed by Speaker Number 23, please, Joanne Lipshutes, and then we will proceed with calling Speaker Number Four, Megan Schmidt, and Speaker Number 20, Amber Madley. Ms. Helen Ramirez Odell, please.
My name is Helen Ramirez Odell, and I am a retired school nurse. When I worked, certified school nurses served all the children in the schools, and all of the students continue to need this service. Students with special education needs may need a great deal of nursing service. We want to provide this. CPS has hired licensed practical nurses to help with nursing procedures, but CPS is creating a crisis by leaving nursing vacancies unfilled. Moving essential health services to the private sector is not the solution. Children need nurses and clinicians who are a part of their school community and have a voice as school workers. Today, a major concern is protecting our child from measles. Tomorrow, it might be meningitis. School nurses are public health specialists and do their job well to make sure our children are immunized. CPS has been wrong to assign school nurses to so many schools, they may have only one day or even a half-day a week at a school. Our LPNs should not have to travel to several schools a day to catheterize or give tube feedings. CPS might not save money by privatizing. If the nurses are paid well by the agency and receive good benefits, CPS won't save money. If the nurses are given low pay and few benefits, they are likely to be unreliable workers who move on to better positions as soon as they can. Private agencies are in the business to make money. One of the largest healthcare agencies used by CPS was found guilty of defrauding the government of millions of dollars in 2011. Eight managers pleaded guilty. Their defense was that the company pressured them to boost profits. This did not happen in Illinois, but is an example of what could happen. CPS can solve this problem by hiring more CPS nurses. Also, CPS should set up their own department where nurses and other clinicians can work on a part-time or temporary basis.
Ms. Ramirez, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 23, Joanne Lipshutes.
Good morning. My name is Joan Lipshutes, and I am a CPS certified school nurse. I love CPS, and I love being a school nurse enough that I took a personal business day and arranged not to have meetings or anything I had to do at my school, so I bet I could come here today to talk to you about the same issue that Mrs. Ramirez Odell has discussed. We need certified school nurses who are committed to CPS, understand the culture and structure of CPS, understand our students. And having worked, I've been the privilege of being a lead nurse, a peer leader or some, and part of that job is cover, is asked, getting, making sure our schools are covered in terms of the students that need one-on-one daily nursing interventions. When we've asked agencies at this point to cover, it can take weeks and weeks to get a nurse to cover. They don't, and then many times, they don't necessarily show up because they're not as committed. There are wonderful nurses too, of course, but, and I have actually spent all morning, from 8:00 to 10:30 to 11:00 in the morning, playing musical chairs with our own nurses to move them around because the agencies were unable to cover the nurses. And if you expand their role, I just can't see how that's going to help anything. We need to post our nursing vacancies where nurses look for them and not in esoteric places. We need to post them in Illinois State Nurses Association and those kind of places. We're down so many positions. We're down 25% less certified school nurses than eight years ago, and it's impacting the care we can provide. And I think putting it out to outside agencies that are less committed and already are showing issues with being able to provide the services we're asking them to is not the solution. We need to hire more of our own nurses who are as committed as I am, willing to, you know, use their, I could be out partying, and I came here on my personal day.
Thank you, Ms. Lipshutes, and Ms. Ramirez Odell. Thanks for coming out and talking to us. It's a situation that I'm sure we'll want to take a look at. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker is then Speaker Number Four, please, Megan Schmidt, followed by Speaker Number 20, Amber Madley. We will then have Speaker Number Five, Cory Archer, followed by Speaker Number Seven, Sandra Sorelli.
Hi, my name is Amber Madley. I'm here from Chicago International Charter School, the Bucktown campus. With me is one of our teachers, Kate Johnson. My partner and I did extensive research before we sent my son to kindergarten. We looked at various CPS options as well as charter alternatives. So, we'd really like to thank CPS for continuing to support charter schools as a part of your strategy to meet the needs of parents searching for high-quality school options. We have been very impressed with CICS's rigorous curriculum that they use and constantly evolve over the, he's in fifth grade now, so for six years. When a 10-year-old boy comes home and he's like, "Do you know what the periodic table is?" And we go, "Oh, yeah." And he's like, "I need one." I had to go out and buy him a poster of the periodic table. Then I know teachers are reaching kids, they're allowing them to be excited about learning, and it's so wonderful to see that. And parent involvement is key. I mean, yeah, I respond to what my son comes home to tell me, you know, if he needs help with something, then we react to that. But parent involvement for all kids is imperative, and I'm a founding board member of Charter Parents United, so very excited that CICS and Noble and the other charter schools came together to support parents who are engaged, who want to see education for all of our Casey has been in an accelerated program for two years at CICS, and so his needs, they met his needs at an individual level. We're so grateful to Barbara Bird Bennett, who has met with CPUs, parents, and I think we have a meeting next week, many times, and giving us great advice on how to collectively meet the needs of these students. This kind of open dialogue shows our kids that with discussion and compromise, that we, all of our kids, can receive that quality education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sorelli.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker Number Five, Cory Archer.
Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Cory Archer. I'm a Doris-
I'm a Door School parent. Thank you for allowing me to speak today to address the issue regarding overcrowding. Overcrowding at Door School is not only crowding out the potential of our students, but also literally crowding out some of our students. In spite of the closing of Door's music room, art room, library, and the use of our gym as a multipurpose room, Door School is currently unable to provide a cluster program for low-incidence students. A building addition to Door School would allow these students to remain at Door past fourth grade. Why is this important? Students with cognitive disabilities are an important part of the Door family and community, and they deserve the same right any core program student has to attend their local school from first to eighth grade. I am the proud parent of a student at Door. He's autistic and has been enrolled in their low-incidence programs since first grade. Because of Door's excellence, he has grown socially, academically, and has made strides that we never thought possible. He is now in fourth grade and sadly will be forced to leave a school he loves, teachers he looks up to, and friends he adores, simply due to a lack of space. Adjusting to change is hard enough for any student, but because of the nature of students with disabilities, change for them is not only hard, it is disruptive. These students have a difficult time acclimating to new environments. Door School is a stone's throw from our front door, yet my son will have to attend a school next year that is further away from our home and one that may even require him to be bused. My fear for him is that changing schools will interrupt the flow of his progress and disrupt all the things he has worked so very hard to achieve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Archer.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. Our next group of speakers, Mr. President and board members, are from the Diego Community Academy, and they have designated speakers. If I can call, please, Speaker Number Thirty-Seven, John Ingles, Speaker Number Six, Megan Shaughnessy, and Speaker Number Fifteen, Juan Madrigal, please.
You know, while they're coming up, Ms. Archer, I would just say to you that, you know, Board Member Zop has visited your school, and I've had a conversation with your principal, and we are aware of the situation, and we worked as hard as we can to try to meet the needs of your community. So I just wanted you to know that we're not ignoring you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Juan Madrigal. I'm a former student of Diego and have been teaching at Diego for ten years. I currently have two children attending Diego, an eighth grader and a fifth grader. Currently at Jose Diego, we have many problems that affect the safety and security of our students and staff. The restorative justice system at our school has not been effectively implemented. There is no behavior interventionist dedicated to work with students' disciplinary issues. As a welcoming school, a disciplinary was to be hired, but never happened. The result is many students have realized there is little to no consequence for disruptive and sometimes dangerous behaviors. When there's an emergency in the classroom, security cannot intervene until an administrator has been called. At times, administration is unavailable to answer the call, creating a situation where things get out of control. Security cannot intervene, their hands are tied, and results dangerous situations develop. An example of this is a sixth-grade student posted a picture of himself on Facebook with a gun after telling students that he was going to kill a staff member. Staff was not informed of this incident, and no special safety or security measures were implemented.
Hi, oh, excuse me. Hello, my name is John Ingles. I've been a teacher at Jose Diego twenty-two years. In October, I discovered a case of twenty-four bullets in my classroom. I had been concerned throughout the day because one of my students has been overly protective of his backpack. Near the end of the day, I saw one of the boys exchange something with another boy, and I caught a glimpse of the box. I asked him to show me what was in the backpack. The student produced the case of bullets, minus three, which had been given to the other student. Upon finding this, I immediately notified administration. The principal came into the room with security and had the class leave the room, and the room was searched, as well as the students' backpacks. No other contraband was found. To the best of my knowledge, the police were not notified of this incident, nor was any other areas of the school locked down or searched. Ironically, that same week, in a suburban school district...
Mr. Ingles?
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Megan Shaughnessy.
Thank you. In addition to that, female students and a female teacher were sexually groped and assaulted in the hallways with no administrative intervention. I'd like to add that. We would request to remedy that. A behavior interventionist immediately, a dean of discipline, and an additional social worker to address the root cause issues that the student code of conduct is supposed to be dealing with. I am here with Ashley Magovero to speak on behalf of the diverse learners community at our school. Due to the daily behavioral issues and sometimes dangerous events, the lack of support and the incredibly low morale that this environment has inspired, we have lost six staff members this year, three of them diverse learning teachers, one of them a twenty-plus-year veteran of the school. The loss of personnel has perpetuated an already unstable learning and working environment for the entire school community. Students were uprooted from their home schools last year and have since experienced a revolving door of administrators, teachers, and school personnel. Our diverse learners are already hindered by deficits, be they learning emotional or both, so they require consistency and structure, two things that we are sorely lacking at Diego. Currently, a team comprised of four teachers is servicing one-hundred-and-eleven students with IEPs. What this means in real terms is that very few of these students are getting the services that they are legally and morally entitled to. We are currently not meeting the special education minutes mandated for the majority of the students because it is impossible in terms of time, space, and personnel. We have placed students in general education classrooms whose IEPs dictate they should be in small classrooms. We are currently servicing kindergarten through eighth-grade students in the same special education classroom because we have no other options. This is both developmentally inappropriate and illegal. Diverse learner teacher caseloads are unreasonably large and will only continue to grow. With the loss of teachers, many teachers have already seen their caseloads jump by more than a dozen students. This is not even considering the numerous initial evaluations of students in the process of being identified as requiring diverse learning services. In addition to these huge caseloads, on several occasions this year, diverse learning teachers have been pulled into gen education classrooms as substitutes. We request that we immediately hire the appropriate number of teachers for our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaughnessy. Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker...
Barbara, I assume that you and the staff will look into this situation and get back to the board.
Karen here. The representative from Diego, if you would meet with my staff member there, we will have a team, including Jay Dean from Safety, Dr. Winston from Diverse Learners, a team there to sit with your faculty and tease through these issues to see what we need. And if you would start with Karen, she will...
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker then will be Speaker Number Ten, please, Arne Steiber, followed by Speaker Number Eleven, Evangelion Nubian. And then we'll proceed with Speaker Number Thirteen, Tanika Sellers.
Good morning. My name is Arne Steiber. I'm a Army Infantry Veteran from the U.S. War against the People of Vietnam. I'm here today to speak to you about the military model. You've noticed the military model being applied to police forces all across the nation and the resulting brutality. When good people are trained to do bad things, they will do bad things. Our children are no different. The military model is conflict resolution by violence. I'll say that again. The military model is conflict resolution by violence. The military model is following orders without question. The military model is expensive to humanity. The military model is detrimental to the well-being of this nation. Yet Chicago Public Schools is teaching the military model to over ten thousand children. CPS is the most militarized school system in the nation. It has been said that children do better academically in military academies and in the military environment. Children do better when they are given opportunities, resources, and recognition in any environment. Give them opportunities, resources, and recognition in a science academy, a poetry academy, or a traditional classroom, and they will do better and thrive. Veterans for Peace, through our initiative Education Not Militarization, is standing up for the children of Chicago and for our nation. We are working to educate the community on the reality of the military model, and we seek to build a movement to remove the military model of conflict resolution by violence from the lives of children. We ask you and the entire community of Chicago and the nation to join us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Steiber. Our next speaker, please, Evangelion Nubian, followed by Speaker Thirteen, Tanika Sellers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Evangelion Nubian. I invite all souls to kick the K-word habit. A kid is an animal beast with four legs. A child is a human being, person, with two legs. If a dog can be called boys and girls, we can call children human beings. I'm here seeking a letter of support for the Jackie Robinson West Little League team to receive a Presidential Ambassador Champions of Goodwill Medal of Honor and a $10,000 scholarship for each of the players for representing America and the city of Chicago so well in the World Championship against the country of Korea. Each Korean player received $100,000 from their country. In conclusion, what are the steps to get a letter of support to be sent to the president?
If you'd contact my staff, Abigail, we'll see what we can do. We obviously applaud the efforts of these young men and what they did and are disappointed in the way Little League has handled the situation. So please contact Abigail and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Last call for Tanika Sellers. Moving on then to the next speakers, please. Speaker Number Sixteen, Renata Horn, followed by Speaker Seventeen, Tina Barrett, Speaker Thirty-Six, Sanada George, and then Speaker Eighteen, Ronald Jackson. Renata Horn, please. Last call. Tina Barrett. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Tina Barrett. I'm a former parent, PAC chairperson, and parent liaison at Sierra Goodstem Academy. Today, I'm here to express serious concerns on behalf of parents, community members, students, and teachers regarding the lack of governance, organizational, and financial oversight at Goodstem Academy, and to ask the board's permission and help in forming a local school council immediately. Goodstem Academy opened its doors to its first freshman class in 2012. As of today, Goodstem Academy has two principals, three administrative assistants, a manager of operations, a manager of student development, a student development coordinator, an early college and career coordinator, two managers of teaching and leadership development, and a Department of Culture, which employs thirteen disciplinarians, including a manager of culture, a dean of student advocate, and three part-time and one full-time Chicago police officers, the largest department in the school, and the plan is to expand next year. What they do not have is necessary teachers, books, and resources. Our juniors are missing vital graduation requirements. At the directive of the network office, the school finally added a world language and music class this semester. But last I checked, the teachers were not even hired for these classes. So we have students attending class today with no qualified teachers. In April, we were denied the right to hold LSC elections because we would not have been completed our second year until June. We have been told that we cannot form an LSC until the next election cycle in 2016. But our need for an LSC is now. We need checks and balances. We need budget oversight. We need the ability to advise this administration on how the budget should and should not be spent. We need the ability to stop the administration from continuing to pump money into administering the school and start being a school by providing the necessary teachers and resources our children need to be successful in school now and beyond. Please give us a special elections for an LSC. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Barrett. Our next speaker, please. Speaker Number Thirty-Six, Sanada George. As she proceeds to the podium, the next speaker will be Speaker Eighteen, Ronald Jackson, then Speaker Number Twenty-One, Rhoda Ray Gutierrez, please. Last call for Sanada George. Mr. Jackson?
Good morning. There must be a God because Ron Emanuel did not get the 50% of the vote that he needs. So with that being said, there will be a runoff, and we will get a chance to get rid of this frightening four board member, starting with Ron, Vitalo, Bennett, and the Law Department. So with that being said, as you notice, as last year, teacher nurses has been asking for nurses in these schools, and the only thing that Vitalo and these boards can say is that we will look into it. So how many times must they keep looking into it instead of doing something about it? We need teachers, nurses in these schools, especially those with special needs. How many times must children have to pay their life for board policy when they're sitting there on their butt and do nothing, but sit there and say, "We will look into it"? You need to ask yourself, "How many times?" And I say, "No more." It's time for this frightening four to be gone from not only this board, but any other board member, any other board that they've tried to get on. Because we know that Ron is not getting back in, and so they're getting ready to make their deals to make sure that whatever they can get, they can get out of this school board. As you notice, they keep saying that the budget. Yet, they say transparent. They have not even put out the report of the fifty schools that they closed. We have not even got that list yet, but yet they're saying transparent. As of now, NBC has not even got that order how much money was saved during the school closing. You're saying that no charter school will inhabit any CPS building, but yet we have some that's already do. What is it that you can say? You can't say nothing, but just sit there and say, "We are looking to it." As I said before, this board should have been charged with murder accessory to rape when they allow these incidents goes on into school. As you notice, in Gage Park, there was a girl that was raped. The board did nothing. But yet, people's come up here and saying that the teacher was raped. The first thing they say, "We were looking to it." If that's not racism, what is it?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
You need to ask the board.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Speaker Number Twenty-One, Rhoda Ray Gutierrez. Last call. Moving on, Mr. President, to the next group of speakers are from the Black Magnet Elementary School, and their designated speakers, please, are Speaker Number Thirty-Two, Andre Kelly, followed by Speaker Thirty-Three...
If I could, Madam Secretary, would I ask that you go first?
Sure.
Hello, my name is... I'm here to talk about the conditions at my school. The conditions at my school are not good because my classroom is small, and we have to sit in the back classroom in the science lab. We sit on stools all day. And when we're going through the hallway, it's too crowded. People get bumped into, people falling. That's it.
Good morning.
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 My name is Andre Kelly. I currently reside on the LSC at Robert A. Black Elementary School, Magnet School. We're a Level One school, a blue-ribbon school. There have been many accolades that I could mention all day, but I'm here to talk about the overcrowding that's going on. If I could give you a visual and what you're talking about, take this runway right here. This is about the size of our hallway in our school. And we have two-hundred-and-seventy students that walk through that hallway daily. We have one bathroom that they're allowed to use. And by that mention, that one bathroom, we had an incident last year where one of our girls got cut on a radiator in the bathroom, and she received several stitches. And it caused her to not be able to continue, excuse me, her eighth-grade basketball career, which she was so excited to play. So there's a number of issues that go on at Robert A. Black. We have flooding in our administrative office, which causes problems for the administration to do their job the way that they need to because they have to rearrange everything when there's issues with the water. Robert A. Black has been a patch school. And what I mean by patch school is that every time there's a problem, there's been a patch put on it. There's a hole in the wall, there's a patch put on it. There's a leak in the ceiling, there's a patch put on it. There's a flood, there's a patch put on it. And we're tired of just receiving a Band-Aid for a problem that's an open wound. Also, I'd like to draw your attention to, excuse me, the capital improvement program that came out for the fiscal year of 1999 to 2003. And in that, it stated that the Chicago Board of Trustees has determined that the new construction is necessary to meet the educational goals of Chicago Public Schools at Black Magnet School. The best solution is to construct an addition to Black Magnet School. And as you notice, this was in 2003, and to date is 2015. So if the state of the school was like that in 2003, Mr. Board President, if the state of the school was like that in 2003, what do you think it is today in 2015?
Mr. Kelly, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 25, Timothy Henigan, followed by Speaker number 26, Latrice Foles, and Speaker number 29, please, Demoin Dominguez. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Tim Henigan, and I am a proud community representative on the Ebberinger LSC. I'm also proud to say that all three of my children have graduated from Ebberinger Elementary. As a longtime resident of Edison Park, I'm here to advocate on behalf of the community for the approval of an annex for Ebberinger. First and foremost, we are choosing to send our children to Ebberinger because we believe in CPS. We also know that our children are receiving a top-notch education that will make them college and career-ready. Our school has become the jewel of Edison Park. When I'm out in the community and people ask me what elementary school my children attended, I'm proud to say it was Ebberinger. And people are listening. They are sending their children to Ebberinger. We, as parents, used to refer to Ebberinger as the best-kept secret on the Northwest Side. Well, the secret is out, and our utilization rates can prove this. Today, we would like to provide you with data supporting the justification of an addition. In 2011, our school population was at 594 students K through 8. Our projections for school year 2016 puts us at 742 students. Our average growth rate over the past five years is 4.7%. Current real estate data shows that this growth rate is not slowing down. If we continue at that rate, our school will have 892 students by the year 2020. We are asking the Board of Education to be responsive and not reactive to this data. Our needs are immediate, and we ask that you announce plans for an addition to the current Ebberinger campus. The time to act is now to proactively solve our current state of overcrowded classrooms and strategically plan for our future. In conclusion, we believe that investing in Ebberinger's addition demonstrates your commitment to providing overcrowded schools like ours with the appropriate learning environment, supporting the mayor's promise to ensure the stabilization of Chicago's middle class, and rewarding schools that work incredibly hard to keep pushing the status quo such that complacency is never accepted with academic performance, as demonstrated by the continued growth in our performance. With the addition of the annex to Ebberinger.
Thank you, Mr. Henigan. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Henigan.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 26, Latrice Foles.
Hi.
Please state your name.
Latrice Foles. We are here on behalf of single parents of Illinois empowered residing in the Alt-Gale Gardens Community in Chicago, Illinois. They are concerned about the substance use and abuse in their community. We are assisting them with a youth substance abuse coalition, and I just wanted to read the mission statement. To educate, train, inspire, and help empower youth to make healthy, informed choices and develop self-sufficient citizens by working together to decrease substance use and promote healthy behaviors and community collaboration, to encourage positive youth development, social emotional learning, positive behavior intervention supports, and leadership empowerment focusing on youth families and prevention of substance abuse strategies to advance social change for them to arise to drug-free communities. Part of the goals and objectives are to reduce substance abuse among youth and adults by identifying and reducing the risk factors, and to serve as a forum that will promote collaboration among multiple sectors of local communities, and to develop and/or adopt multiple prevention strategies to address the problem of substance abuse in the Riverdale, Alt-Gale, Chicago, Illinois communities. Our goal is to empower youth leaders to advance social change to promote healthy, drug-free communities, to empower youth to be leaders, change agents, and promote healthy, drug-free communities, youth leadership development, education, and for the community about substance abuse use. Studies have shown that 4,000 12- to 17-year-olds use drugs for the first time every day. The coalition strategies are to provide information, enhance skills, provide educational, social, and emotional support, enhance access, reduce barriers, and change consequences, modify behaviors, and modify changing policies to help decrease youth substance use and abuse.
Thank you, Ms. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Foles.
My name is Demoin Dominguez, and those 4,000 youths between the ages of 12 and 17 who use drugs for the first time, that represents 21% of the high school students of Chicago Public Schools. Statistics and surveys, the current data show that since the inception of drug-free communities, more than 2,000 community coalitions exist. These coalitions are supporting 4.4 million middle school students between the ages of 12 and 14, and it is also supporting 6.3 million high school students between the ages of 15 and 18. And that represents 36% of all the United States youth. Also, data, current data, or use risk behavior survey, it indicates that there are, as it relates to marijuana usage for the first time, 22% of the Chicago Public Schools students have indicated that they use marijuana for the first time over the past 30 days. Also, 8% have indicated they have used prescription drugs without doctor's orders. Also, 30% has indicated that they have offered or even sold drugs on the school properties. Also, the idea or the mindset is that the use has increased because the mindset is that these drugs or the usage of it is not harmful to me. Also, the adolescents that purchase cigarettes that belongs to the Chicago Public School system is at 24%. So, we'd just like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 34, please, Deborah Butler-Born, followed by Speaker 35, Shawna Young, and then Speaker 42, Sang Jiff, followed by Speaker 38, Jennifer Biggs.
Good morning.
Please state your name.
My name is Deborah Butler-Born. I currently work at DePree's Elementary School as a community relations representative. I am both privileged and proud to be on the DePree's winning team, a school where I have watched children with autism who have come to us as nonverbal three-year-olds and had yet to develop toileting, social appropriate behavioral, and academic skills evolve into viable students. Currently, these students now talk, engage with their general education peers, and perform academically in class, given the help of dedicated, hard-working teachers and paraprofessionals along with education programs such as Touch Math and Orton Gillingham. These students now rewrite and spell and do math at their individual level of expertise. I would like to retain my position at DePree's School. I welcome the opportunity to work with, serve DePree's parents and students, and would like to continue to play an integral part in their continued success. I am here to request that the board consider an alternative form of discipline other than terminating my employment at DePree's. I did not intentionally provide false residency information to increase my daughter's chances for admission into a selective enrollment school. CPS was provided with both a mailing and home address. I did not complete my daughter's SES online enrollment application. I did not state that I and my daughter moved to or resided at the said mailing address. I received no gain or benefit from the use of the mailing addresses my daughter passed the selective enrollment exam for tiers one, two, and three. I hope that you would allow me to continue to work with the children at DePree's. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Our next speaker, please. Shawna Young. Last call. Moving on to Speaker 42, Sang Jiff. Last call. Moving on to Speaker 38, Jennifer Biggs, and as she approaches the podium, our next speakers will be Speaker 39, Jacqueline Stewart, followed by Speaker 40, Cassandra Cuswell, and the last speaker, Speaker 43, Kathleen Acosta. Please state your name.
Sure. Jenny Biggs from Raise Your Hand. Good morning. I'm starting with some numbers today. 97% of school boards are elected in the United States. Yesterday, 93.3% of Ward 24 voters voted yes to the elected school board question yesterday. 83.1% of Ward 46 voters voted yes to the elected school board question yesterday. 89% is the average across all of the 37 wards. 89% of voters voted yes to an elected school board. 6,121, the number of signatures on our Park the Park petition. Two, the number of Raise Your Hand parents testifying in Springfield today on the park subject matter hearing. We are sharing with Springfield parental input about park, technology issues, and our concerns with ISB and their actions and policies with respect to park. I really thought today there was going to be a solid park decision announcement. You have said 10% will be tested, but at the schools, educators are scrambling and stressed and don't know what to do because they are being told to move forward as if everyone is going to be tested. This is unacceptable. Families are angry, so angry. They do not know what to do. They do not know what is happening. I am here to ask you to please tell us what is going on. Make a statement, please. It's unfair to leave all of us hanging in limbo. Plus, this really looks like politics. I was here two months ago to ask for an opt-out policy by CPS. I handed in a handout today about different legislation happening at different states regarding park and opt-out. Please note, in New Jersey, 175 districts wrote their own refusal policies. I am here today also to demand that you write a refusal policy that will be followed by families, teachers, principals.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs.
Teachers, principals, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Madam Secretary, I've been notified that Vice President Sharkey is here and would like to speak. I'd welcome him to the podium.
Mr. Sharkey, please.
Thank you. Oh, I like my shot clock. That's good. Thank you. I have not spoken about the issue of an elected school board before this body. I've sort of, mainly because I know we're not going to agree about it. It's like bringing up the question of what's on the Thanksgiving menu with your vegan cousin. That being said, given the results yesterday, I think I can't avoid it. So, good morning, appointed President Vitale and appointed Vice President Ruiz, CEO Bird Bennett. Yesterday, in 37 wards, the question of an elected school board was put before the voters of Chicago. It took 60,000 signatures to get that on the ballot. As you just heard, almost 90% of the people who voted on that measure voted yes. It's nine to one. The question about why we need it, I think, becomes clear when you start thinking about the issues like the park, which is that I know the argument is that we should set school board policy above politics, and yet it's clearly not. On the question of charters, which you promote despite their record, that's become a political issue. The question of closings, which are the top of an issue in the election. And now the question of the park test. What's going on? They've been delivered in the schools. Every school has got a packet of park tests right now sitting in their office or in a locked storeroom. And yet, testing starts in eight days. The window starts in eight days. My students' teachers are doing test preparation for the park, taking what would otherwise be instructional time to talk about a test, which we don't yet know if that test is being given. And I understand it's a political issue. You're squeezed in one hand between the Illinois State Board of Education saying that it will enforce Department of Education policy and potentially cut spending, or, you know, cut funding, thank you. And on the other hand, with the teachers and students and people who don't want to see that test given for the reasons that CEO Bird Bennett pointed out very eloquently, which is that it's not going to be, it's going to hurt us as a test. Welcome to the world of politics.
Mr. Sharkey? Thank you.
That's my point. So, we need to know what's going on with that.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 39, Jacqueline Stewart. Last call. Moving on to Speaker 40, Cassandra Cuswell. Last call. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Kathleen Acosta. I am a proud charter school parent. I'm a senior, I'm a junior at Epic Academy on the southeast side of Chicago. Four years ago, we were looking for a high school for our daughter. We found out that we had a choice beyond the public school across the street from our house, which meant traveling further so that our children could attend Epic. She was diagnosed with a learning disability in grade school, and we wanted to make sure that she went to a school that would be able to support her. I went to Epic's open house, and I was so impressed with the principal, staff, and students. After leaving the open house, we knew this was the school for us. Epic teachers have positively encouraged her throughout these four years. They have supported her and kept her on track. Thanks to the teachers and special education program, she is now in all regular education classes and has a GPA of 3.0. She has been accepted to Western Illinois University and will attend there in the fall to study to become a nurse. She is the first in our family to attend college coming from immigrant parents. We couldn't be prouder. The college support system at Epic goes beyond the call of duty. If our kids weren't at Epic, we wouldn't know anything about college process. At Epic, everything is about getting students through college. Even after they graduate, they keep in touch and they support the graduates in college. Because of Epic, my children are on the path to college education. We are so thankful for everyone at Epic who has made these four years possible for my children. Thank you so much for my two minutes in giving us a choice of charter education and Epic Academy. Thank you, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta. And, Mr. President, our last speaker then will be Speaker number 22, please.
Hi, my name is. When I was in eighth grade, I dreamt of going to Northside College Prep. I submitted my application there and to all of Chicago's selective enrollment schools. Unfortunately, I did not get into any of them. I worked hard in elementary school, and I felt like I let my family and myself down, and I felt devastated. It was not an easy time for me. It is a reality not so many people speak about. It wasn't until Ms. Brown, the vice principal of CICS Prairie, told me that I should apply to Noble. I had never heard of Noble, but she said it was the perfect place for a student like me. I submitted my application to Noble, I submitted my application to Meechum College Prep right across the street from here. I was originally waitlisted. My family and I were terrified. High school was quickly approaching, and I had no idea where I was going. Then, my phone rang. I remember the day as if it were yesterday. Ms. Raina called and asked if I was still interested in going to Meechum. Yes. I called my mom immediately after. We cried. It was an amazing feeling. Now, fast forward to 12th grade. Here I go again. This time, Noble has prepared me. I've already applied to 12 colleges, all highly selective. My first choice, the University of Iowa, and I was accepted.
Congratulations.
I have received five acceptance so far, and I am still waiting for the others. Hard work pays off. I want to thank you. Because had CPS not allowed for my school to open its doors in 2009, I don't know where I would be right now. Thank you for giving me a chance. Six months from now, I will be headed to college.
Congratulations.
Mr. President, that concludes public participation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this juncture, I'd like to ask my fellow board members if they have any comments on what we've heard today from the public, or if they have any questions on the public agenda that they have not yet had answered.
I would just like an update on what we are doing with the nursing program, how we're assigning and aligning the nurses, how we're using the visiting nurses, the private nurse organizations. So, I just think that would be helpful. So, I don't know who that is, Barbara, but that would be useful to have.
No, Barbara.
Okay.
So, we will make sure you get an update from the management.
And then we had three schools, Diego, Sarah Good, Robert Black, which was a space issue that I hope we got some follow-up on, the issues that were raised by the parents who came from those schools.
I think the Diego issue is, and Good were not space, but they are issues that we do need to hear back on. There were two space issues that I heard. One was Black and Ebberinger. I should say that I think.
Endor.
Endor. I should say that I think, I would tell you that we are, and the staff is aware of all of those issues, and they are on the agenda, subject to the, of trying to deal with them, subject to the resources available as we go through the capital planning process this year. So, I appreciate the people coming down and advocating for their school and those issues. But, as we all know. issues and, but as we all know, we have to find a white way to prioritize our resources, and we'll see if those three schools fit in those priorities. Sure. Henry.
Iowa is a great place. What, what other places were you admitted to? I'm just curious.
I was also accepted to ISU. I was accepted to Knox College, whatever, but Turbo University, small private school in Wisconsin. And there's another one.
Must not be high on your list.
Go to Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I would just say, and Vice President Sharkey pointed out, our, our position on the park has been clear and consistent. The response we've gotten from other authorities has also been clear. And the reality is that we have continued to work very, very hard to try to get everybody to agree with what our position is. We continue to do that, but we do face the potential consequence that we will have to deal with. So, you know, we're working hard to try to maintain where we are, but, you know, the consequences of, the, the consequences of not doing it are ones that we have to be aware of. So Vice President Sharkey was correct. We're caught between a rock and a hard place, and we're trying to find a way out.
I do have a question regarding our district finances. Is the, because it's in our agenda, is the impact of borrowing right now, will this have higher long-term cost and implications for credit rating? Just some information on that?
You know, Tim, you want to give an answer to that, please?
The borrowing that's being proposed today is no new debt. What we're doing is replacing debt that we already have in the line of credit, in bonds that are expiring, and just swapping them out. And in fact, for some of the debt, we're actually refinancing.
Tim, don't use that word, because we're not swapping them.
A bad word. We're exchanging. We are refinancing certain bonds that we have because we can get bonds at a lower interest rate.
For the same duration?
For the same duration. So, we, so that's actually very favorable for us, and we'll save, we think we can save ten million dollars by doing that, just by getting a lower interest rate. So, this does not, this is to just optimize the debt portfolio that we currently have.
So it should not lead to any.
It should not lead to.
Credit rating decrease.
Well, this transaction should not lead to a credit rating decrease. The, but, and, to be completely transparent about it, the fact that we are doing this, we go out and we have to tell our story, and as Dr. Bird Bennett mentioned, our story is grim at this point on the operating budget. And so as we describe where we are, the market may, there may be a reevaluation of our rating as a result of that, what they're looking at from a budget standpoint, but not because of this exchange.
Not because of this action.
Exactly.
Thank you.
They'll actually probably admire that we're doing this to optimize our debt portfolio.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Other questions for management? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Beenan, do you have a motion to go into closed session?
I move for the passage of motion number fifteen dash oh-two-two-five dash MO one, and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subjects specified in the motion.
Second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Five i's, zero n's.
Thank you. We'll move into closed session. Okay, the meeting of the Board of Education has reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. And before I proceed with the agenda items, I'd like to note for the record that Dr. Heinz has joined the business portion of the meeting via telephone. I will continue, I will start with items from closed session, Mr. President, and I will start with settlements. These items do require a vote. First report, workers' compensation payment for luntsum settlement for Charlene Chrisler, case number twelve WC one-three-six-nine-six and twelve WC one-three-three-nine-seven. The second report is the workers' compensation payment for luntsum settlement for Catherine Doolan, case number fourteen WC one-seven-seven-one-eight. The third report is the workers' compensation payment for luntsum settlement for Angie Varvelatos, case number eleven WC one-nine-five-three-three. The fourth report is the approved settlement of Chicago Teachers Union Grievance Number six-six-three-three slash thirteen dash oh-nine dash oh-four-eight, brought on behalf of tenured teacher Bessie Eckrich. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
May I have a motion? So moved. Second.
Second.
I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. I will continue with one other matter, Mr. President. This item does require a vote. Authorize the retention of the pre-qualified pool of appraisers to act as expert witnesses in connection with property tax appeal cases. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on that matter. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention.
Thank you. I will continue with items from the chief executive officer, and I will begin with a collecting, collective bargaining matter. This item does require a vote. Approved tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education of the City of Chicago and Service Employees International Union Local Seventy-three. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. I will continue with items from the chief executive officer. The next item is a rescind warning resolution. This item does require a vote. Rescind warning resolution for Mark Thompson, tenured teacher formerly assigned to Harlan Community Academy High School. And for the record, I would like to note that this report rescinds Board Report eleven dash oh-four-two-seven dash EX thirty-four. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. I will continue with warning resolutions, and these items do require a vote, and they are Eileen Duran, tenured teacher assigned to Alice L. Bernard Computer, Math, and Science Center Elementary School. Karen Ojafetmy, tenured teacher assigned to Albert Lane Technical High School. Michelle Richards, teacher previously assigned to Edwards Cole's Elementary Language Academy. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. And I will continue with one other matter, and this item does require a vote, and it is adopt finding that pupils were non-residents of the City of Chicago indebted to the Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now I will continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote, and they are: First report, resolution approving chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that on February twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board Rule four dash seven B two B and one oh five ILCS five slash thirty-four dash eighty-four. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons. She also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. And I believe that Vice President Reese has a motion, please?
Yes. I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of January twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen pursuant to Section two point oh six of the Open Meetings Act. Board members have reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality continues to exist. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on January twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection at this time.
May I have a second?
Second.
I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's, and I believe Board Member Zapp has a motion, please?
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of January twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section two point oh six B of the Open Meetings Act.
Second, please.
Seconded.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. Mr. President, I will now continue with the items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda, and I will begin with resolutions. These items do require a vote. RS one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. I will continue with a communication. This item does not require a vote. This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, forty-two West Madison Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at ten-thirty a.m. For the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen board meeting, advance registration to speak and observe. Will be available beginning Monday, March sixteenth, at eight a.m. and close on Friday, March twentieth, at five p.m., or until all slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda. I will continue, Mr. President, with additional items on the public agenda that require a vote, and they are EX one, EX two, EX three, PR one, PR two. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR two. Moving on to PR three, for the record, I would like to note an abstention for President Vitale, as well as Vice President Reese on PR three. Moving on to PR four. On PR five, I would like to note for the record abstentions for Vice President Reese, as well as Dr. Beenan on PR five. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the next item, Mr. President, is PR six. For the record, I would like to note that this report will be revised, and the final will be in the action. The attachment will be revised to reflect four exhibits in the order, in order to take four separate votes for this item due to the requisite votes. So the first vote, Mr. President, will be to authorize vendors one through thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one through twenty-six, twenty-nine, and thirty, listed on Exhibit A one. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. The second vote will be to authorize vendors fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, listed on Exhibit A two. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention on that exhibit for Vice President Reese. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
With the noted abstention.
With the noted abstention.
Thank you. The third vote, Mr. President, will be to authorize vendor number twenty, listed on Exhibit A three. And for the record, I would like to note abstentions for Vice President Reese, as well as Dr. Ascoitia, on Exhibit A dash three. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you. And the fourth vote for this matter is to authorize vendors number twenty-seven and twenty-eight, listed on Exhibit A dash four. And for the record, I would like to note abstentions for Vice President Reese, as well as Dr. Beenan on Exhibit A dash four. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll, roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with additional items on the public agenda that require a vote, and they are PR seven, PR eight, PR nine, PR ten, PR eleven. For the record, I would like to note an abstention for PR eleven for Vice President Reese.